Maybe from further out or they missed the bus and they're kind of out there running across what we think are fairly busy streets. So I really appreciate that while we're not mandated to maybe pick up some of those students that we are looking at, the route they would take to school and determining if it's safe for them to go that way and picking it up, providing that transportation if they don't otherwise have it. Because I think that's really important, our first duty to them is their safety.
Exactly.
So I appreciate you doing that and I'm sure those numbers were increased because of providing that additional transportation. I also like that you have a variety of vehicles so that people can kind of see how many people need to go places that they could choose maybe a less expensive mode of transportation to get them there. I think that really saves our buses for when we really need our buses. And I would also have to say that having seen the buses out and about in the community picking up and dropping off kids and going to different games or tournaments, that type of thing, they always look nice. Our buses are so well maintained and they look good on the ground. Their appearance is good and they're really is a good reflection of the district and I appreciate that representation is really well, that we're out there.
I just want to speak as a parent real quick to thank you for how accommodating you've been to speak your first year as a parent of kids who've had you in keeping the time that they're on the bus too, minimum. I know that I really truly sorry.
I miss that.
The more sleep.
Sorry.
That's okay. The more sleep they get in the morning, the better they do as well and just how accommodating you've been to add those routes if they needed.
Well, and that was one of our, one of our goals when I first, when I first got there, there were a number of things that I wasn't all that thrilled about and I think some of you as parents probably saw them as well. But in the past, we've had buses going out to a neighborhood and picking up elementary, intermediate, middle school and high school kids all on the same bus. I know that parents complained last year when I was at Kenneth Henderson, why is my middle school kid on the bus with high school kids and I really don't want them on the bus with high school kids? And they're getting picked up at 5:45 in the morning and then they're being run all over the place and dropped off here and there, transferring. And I, I wanted to do away with that and I wanted to get it to where we have a bus that goes to a neighborhood and it's going straight to that school. And again, it's, it's a little stressful at times because when that bus isn't running just right, things might fall behind a little bit, but I thought it was really important to have those kids on the bus less than an hour. Last year at Kenneth Henderson, I talked to a number of kids that they said, I've been on the bus since 10 before 6:00. And it was 7:30 and they looked really, really sleepy. And I thought, there's no need for that, especially when they don't live that far away from here. You know, we can pick them up at 7:15 and get them to school by 7:30 and it's a lot better. So, one of the first things that happened this year, we were getting phone calls at the beginning of the year on the first couple of days of school, where's the bus, where's the bus? Why is my high school kid not getting picked up on this bus with my, last year that happened? And I said, well, we changed that. You know, these are the reasons why and you know, there will be a bus coming for your high school student, it will just be coming later. And the parents said, oh, thank you. My high school student is going to love you for that. And I said, whatever I can do, that's, I'm here, I'm here to help, so.
Well, I feel like it's gone really well and whenever I called in to have a pleasant voice on the phone, because I know you guys are stressed to deal with types of calls, but I call in with questions or anything like that, it's always been very pleasant, helpful and appreciative.
Well, thank you. That's, again, that's another one of our goals is the customer service needed to improve a little bit, so that's, anything, anytime I hear that it's not, I, I make sure that we have a conversation about it because that's, you know, dealing with the public is, is what we're there for and dealing with students and parents and I want them to have a pleasant experience all the way around.
I just wanted, I'm sure I know that Anthony's question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On the, the areas that are closer to schools that may be a higher risk, like Jane mentioned, you know, the heavier traffic streets or railroad crossings, have we looked at increasing our number of crosswalk guards in lieu of transportation, bus transportation in areas that that's possible?
That, I, I don't know the answer to that one, not at all.
Just for the purpose of promoting health and wellness and activity, I mean, we just heard.
Right, right.
We heard the presentation on, you know, how important it is to walk and move. I, I just don't want us to overlook a simple thing like a crosswalk guard in area, a high-risk area as an alternative to the cost of a bus going there.
Right.
So I'm sure, I'm sure you'll look at that. Anyone else?
I just want to, Charlie, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you, do you know off the top of your head how many buses you had out this last weekend?
Let's see, there were four, four in the Yukon that went to Manhattan for the marching festival. There was another one out of town for the robotics. We had two that went out the night before, plus a van that went to Wichita Northwest for football, which, and then we had the cross country, we had volleyball. So there's almost nine right there. And the, and the bad part about it was that our activity drivers, since they were driving so early in the morning to take band up to Manhattan, they could not drive on the Friday night because we have a rule that they have to have so many hours of sleep after they've gone to an event. And when they were coming back from football, it would not have given them enough time to sleep in order to get up to go to Manhattan. So, we had to work that in. And like I said, Friday, or Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, those are really busy times for us. We had, we had individuals scheduled to be on bus trips this weekend for robotics and I think, I'm trying to think of what else is going on. But then with the volleyball and the cross country making it to state, we had to pull them from those activities and put them on, on those activities. So it's one of those things where you, you know, you have all your, your plans and good intentions are there and then you just have to change and go with it. So, you have to be very, very flexible in our job, so.
Well, and the reason I ask, I think it's pretty easy to assume that it's not real complex what we do in transportation, but when you, when you see it from your view and the day in and the day out and really how monumental it is and obviously safety is the number one, the number one concern, but it, it's pretty amazing what, what we do in terms of transportation. So, last week was School Transportation Appreciation Week. We decided not to appreciate our people last week because it was only three days long.
We're on five.
Which we heard about, by the way.
So we are celebrating School Transportation Appreciation Week this week and I think Thursday, we're going to go out and breakfast for the bus drivers and staff in transportation to tell them thanks for what they do, that's something we do every year. And it really is an important job. And it's no other job in the school district where we have an adult supervising kids, do we encourage them to turn their back on the kids that are super. But it's a, it's a, it's mandatory when you're driving a school bus, so they do an awesome job. I appreciate your presentation tonight and I'm glad we could get you kind of in the rotation here of doing these reports and visiting sports.
Definitely. And just to, just to give you an example, when Dr. Carlin asked if we knew how many buses went out, there was a day, early on in September, middle of September, we had two buses gone for a middle school football game, we had another two buses gone for middle school cross country, we had another two buses gone for the same cross country event that was going out for the high school. With those buses being out, and again, those are all activity buses, we had to fill in drivers with, with other people because our route drivers had to go out and drive the activities since we only have the three activity drivers. With that being said, at that same time, we had had a bus driver go out with burst appendix, we had another bus driver out due to a long illness. So at one, at one point during that day, I believe JL and I since were the only two in the office without a CDL license, we were the only two in the office because our dispatch went out to drive a bus, our routing secretary was driving a bus, our maintenance secretary was driving one of the Suburbans and all four of our bus mechanics were out driving that day. So, oh, and not to mention, we also borrowed a, a teacher, we borrowed a science teacher from Charles Stone's, thanks to Janet Smith. She allowed us to have a, a teacher come over and drive after, or drive, leave school early and come and drive for us, so. That was a day where I think there's a few more gray hairs in here for, for some reason, but yeah, that's.
So substitutes are welcome.
Substitutes are welcome and if you know anyone that has a CDL that would love to substitute bus driver, we're taking applications at all times.
Even if they don't have a CDL, we can train them.
We will, we will train them, yes, we will.
Well, it seems like a great job. I want that job someday. Well, one could argue, we did give them a break Thursday, a break into that regular route, so we were busy last week too.
Yeah.
There's no regular route. And we're still busy, but not the regular route.
And I told them as appreciation for their time, we gave them Thursday and Friday off.
Yep.
None of them believed it.
They did like the cookies and the muffins that we brought in this morning. Tomorrow, we're bringing them soup, we're making soup for them and taking it in. And then Wednesday, we're making sandwiches, bringing all the goodies for sandwiches. You guys will be doing breakfast on Thursday.
So the way that their hearts is through their stomachs, right?
Absolutely, yes. Friday is dessert, so if any of you wants to bring dessert by, they would love you.
Anyone else?
I just had one comment. This is really important and we need to continue to have attention in women's or transportation department because with the size of our high school especially, we are going to be constantly on the road, going places and working with the other schools. So, we really do appreciate you and please continue to speak up with the new members so that we can solve problems before they get involved.
Charlie, school look great, I was.
Yeah, and just as an example, when getting back from the marching festival, I understand the buses are pretty late getting back or pretty early, depending on your perspective. Like 4:30 in the morning?
Yes, I'm.
And they're all happy to be doing their job, they really enjoy spending time with the kids. You rarely hear that, that our drivers get cranky and, if anybody puts.
Glad you see that.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for my dear, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Charlie.
Oh, I thought your answer was going to be, yeah, we did that. So sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I answer, there's not a response I need to give. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? A second? I'm sorry, Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same side? No change carries. Deb, you ready?
Yes.
Spotlight's on you. Always one of my favorite presentations.
If you guys don't mind.
I'm Deb Jarre for new board members who may not know me. I'm the Career and Technical Education Coordinator at Garden City High School. Tonight, I just want to talk briefly, an update on career and tech ed, but I did put in a little bit of old information for the new board members, but I really want to talk about career-ready practices and opportunities that are offered to our students at Garden City High School. And that, that is really the driving force of what I see as, part of my job is to provide those opportunities through our administration and our staff that will help our students transition to college board career and viable careers that are life-sustaining careers. And so, I want to first go with the fact that we have 13 career pathways and these are based on the career clusters. And there are 16 career clusters, but within that, there are over 80 different pathways and in our high school, we have 13. Sorry, you can't, I guess you can see over here. I would say that our largest academy is the Trades Academy, Health Science and Manufacturing are probably have our highest population of students, but I can tell you, every one of our tech teachers has a full schedule. So, they're all full and the, the interesting thing is several years ago, when we started doing more integration with academics, we initially had 20 to 22 technical teachers who came through that certification process. But now, we have at least an additional 10 or 12 teachers who are academic teachers. For example, chemistry teachers, A&amp;P teachers, teachers who are science teachers now, biology is now considered a career in technical education course, chemistry is, and anatomy, physiology, body system. So, we're looking at that integration is more and more critical. As our students leave, they've got to have balance of both. So, every one of these pathways has some type of academic integration, whether it's within the classroom or a component of that sequence is a, is a academic course. Just a little background information, plans of study, the pathways and plans of study, this is a requirement of the Carl Perkins Education, Technical Education Act of 2006. And every LEA that has or does receive Perkins funds must have at least one pathway or plan of study. And as I, you know, just pointed out, we have 13. Now, the last reauthorization of Perkins was in 2006, the next one should have been in 2011, but the feds are behind and so they just continue the process. But as of last Thursday or Friday, I had a webinar with KSDE and also some tech news and right now, Congress is looking at reviewing that reauthorization. What does that mean to us? Probably it'll be a year or so out before anything's done, but it will make, there will be some changes in what we do here as far as our practices within our district and within the state and nationally as well. Some of those could have to do with certifications, some might have to do with plans of study, or it could also be different types of requirements as far as how the funding is spent. So, we're waiting to see what that might happen, we really don't know right now. A plan of study, a POS, acronym, is basically a comprehensive structured approach to delivering the academics and the technical education skills in a pathway and it's really designed to prepare students for career success. And ultimately, that's really where our students are going to end up, we're all going to have to go to work at some point. And Mr. Norby came back from model schools and he said, college and career-ready is great, but really ultimately, it's career-ready. And he said, that's what our focus is going to be. And I think he's right, I mean, I think that was the message he brought back to our staff and certainly it fits in with what we're doing at Garden City High School. So we are preparing our students to be career-ready and to be successful in those careers, whatever they may choose. There are some career-ready practices that come from the common core or, or core standards and practices for technical education. And I highlighted some, or I underlined some that I think we truly are working on and others I think were in blue, I think we need to work on a little bit more. But these are, first of all, first one, act responsible and contributing, act as a responsible and contributing citizen and employee. That's pretty much our vision of the board. And I think that's been in front of everyone and needs to continue to be. But the second one, apply academic and technical skills, that's basically the Perkins 2006, that integration piece. So, all of these are out in front of our staff and yet, I think there's some that we need to work on. And it's not just high school, it can be K-12. So, we don't have to wait to high, to get to high school to look at career-ready practices, but these are the ones outlined in that career and college standards. I want to talk just a few minutes about SB 155, Senate Bill 155, three years ago, one of Governor Brown Beck's initiatives was to provide, basically, and he was looking to provide a stronger workforce, a skilled workforce, and to do that, he said that he would reimburse funds from the state into schools and community colleges, especially community colleges, or technical schools where certifications were met. And if our students in the high school met the skills and requirements for certifications, they would reimburse our school $1,000 for specific certifications. Now, there were probably over 20 different certifications, but in our high school, only about six or seven actually made the cut. In other words, CDL is one, which you have to be 18 to get a CDL and that most, there are a few high schools in Kansas that do offer that for 18-year-olds, but HVAC for another example and plumbing and construction workers just don't quite qualify at the high school level, or at least in some of our, in our programs. But you can see that our certifications for the last three years, AWS welding, Level One, we had, you can see the, the, the numbers, 11, 24 and 21, the CNA, 12, 16 and 25. NCCR is construction and it is a Level One electrical. So, that was offered through the Garden City Community College, our students were taking a dual credit class and that particular course ended at the college, so we had no students in that class last year, that program was canceled. Pro Start is through the culinary program and it was only offered last year and this year and it's being cut. So we had two students last year and, or two years ago, we had no students in 2015. Serve Safe at the employer's level was not offered in 2013 and it was offered in 14 and 15 and we had one student make that, so. And when I, when I have these numbers and put them together and compile them for the state, the students also have to be a senior and they have to graduate for this basically report to take place. So, while we have juniors take the CNA and we have some juniors maybe in Pro Start or Serve Safe, they only qualify when they're seniors. So, there are students that aren't listed and don't show up here because they were juniors when they took the certifications last year. And you can see at the bottom, the state funding for 13 and 14, basically 26,000, 43,000 and then, I don't know what the figure is this year, but it's about half of that, 47, around 20 some thousand dollars based on that lowering of that state allotment. At first, they said last year there would be no funds and committee went before, I'm not sure, the K Board or the governor and basically that was raised to $450. But what that's done is also raised the rigor in our classrooms, our technical classrooms because the students will have to meet those demands for that certification. And that has made them a little more aware of, of the skills that they're learning and how they apply those skills and how that's going to be looked at in trade and industry especially. So it's been a good thing, I think, and one of the things that's going to come about probably with the Perkins Five or the reauthorization will be a reporting of any kind of certification.
Just to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Why, why just the senior year again?
Because they have to be a graduate of the high school, they want to see that you're a graduate and you earned a certification. Because if you didn't graduate, what does that say about everything else you didn't do? So they want to see that you are a graduate, that you have a certification and now they know you can go to work and you can go to school or you can take a different path if so be it, but.
Does the certification go away their senior year, if they got it in their junior year?
No, we just pull that up and report.
Okay, so we can report that later?
We did, and I didn't, I didn't say that we can report it, so we have to keep track of those students in those, in those areas. So, I had more than, I had, I think, six that, that earned a Serve Safe, but they were, most of them were juniors. And then they're cutting it, so they won't be reported next year. So, other certifications right now, and I might be amiss on some of these, but as far as software, we have several teachers that teach specific software, it's Photoshop under Adobe Sweet, CS6 is our, is the newest that we, that we have, Illustrator and Flash, Microsoft Office in our web and digital communications pathway. And we are a certified site, Mrs. Ackerman's here, she is a certified examiner. Under pre-pack, that comes under general family consumer sciences and there are five different certifications our students can earn. The OSHA 10 under welding and drafting and also our students in the energy, I'm not going to say pathway yet, in the energy classes must take the OSHA. Now, they don't have to pass it, but there are questions on their energy pathway certification that come from OSHA. So, we're going to look at how we deliver that OSHA 10 next year and it might be a little bit different than we're doing now, so.
Who's teaching that?
Two ways right now. Mr. Merle is teaching it in his welding classes and he teaches it during mentoring and during the class, so they can come in during mentoring and work on it, but it's, it's a year-long process during the welding class. They have to spend some time each week on, online and they log in, they take the, they read, they do some practice in the lab and then they, they take an assessment as they go through or at least short quizzes. In the energy pathway, Flint Hills Technical College has sent someone already one day this week to give our students the first day of training and it was like a six or seven-hour training and then they'll have a second day of it.
Will they get an OSHA card? Do you know?
Yeah, they will if they pass. Yes, they will get an OSHA card if they pass. And so, Flint Hills is basically providing that trainer for us, it's free of charge. Now, our students, it's, it's $25 to take that OSHA exam, I believe, for our students. And so, what we're doing with the Senate Bill 155 funds, and I didn't put that on the slide, but we are using the funds to help the students pay for the test because that is one of the requirements that you make sure that you pay, help them pay for their college dual credit class and also help them with the testing, so. That's one of the ways we're using that SB 155. And then we're using it for some consumables for the students to test if they've got to practice a little bit more, especially in welding and that's more consumables, so. The Energy Fundamentals has a certification and we had two students out of six seniors last year that gained that and that's a 25-hour certification. And how did they do that? Flint Hills is a great partner and basically the, the initial class starting last January for power plant technology, kind of a pilot class, we had 18 students in the class, six were seniors. And those seniors, all of them took 15 credit hours online and the 15 credit hours only cost our students $5 a credit hour. And you can imagine what a savings that was to those students. Now, Flint Hills also paid for mentor teacher to be in the classroom because we did not have a teacher to give, we had, I mean, there's just no extra staff. So they provided a teacher, paid for that teacher mentor to be in the classroom to help the students with the online class. Six of, all six of the seniors ended up taking 15 hours and then two of them took 10 additional hours by the end of June. And those two students both earned apprenticeships, one at Black Hills and one at Sunflower Electric and those were paid apprenticeships. And so, both have been offered jobs when they finish college because they're both, one is at Garden City Community College and one is at Fort Hays. So they, or no, one is at Flint Hills and one is at, at Garden City Community College. So they both are looking at possibility of coming back to Finy County and working, hopefully, or maybe somewhere else that maybe Black Hills might place them. But, one of the things about opportunities I wanted to say earlier too is that, that's one of the things we need to look at as for career and tech education is what are the demands in our area in, in Garden City and Southwest Kansas? And if there are viable jobs, careers, that's the better word, that are life-sustaining, above entry level, our students hopefully will come back here because it's a great place to live. And that's what we want to do, is plant that seed that you could work here. So if we have these mentor, business and industry people that come into our classrooms, we can send them out to do job shadow or apprenticeships, it, it sets a good, I think, standard for our students to see that this could be a great place for me to work. So they, or no, one is at Flint Hills and one is at, at Garden City Community College. So they both are looking at possibility of coming back to Finney County and working, hopefully, or maybe somewhere else that maybe Black Hills might place them. But one of the things about opportunities I wanted to say earlier too is that, that's one of the things we need to look at as for career and tech education is what are the demands in our area, in, in Garden City and southwest Kansas? And if there are viable jobs, careers, that's the better word, that are life-sustaining, above entry level, our students hopefully will come back here because it's a great place to live. And that's what we wanna do, is plant that seed that you could work here. So if we have these mentor, business and industry people that come into our classrooms, we can send them out to do job shadow or apprenticeships. It, it sets a good, I think, standard for our students to see that this could be a great place for me to work, but they've got to have the education. And the fact that Black Hills and Sunflower both offer the students a job, I mean, the promise of a job is, I think, just says a lot about our students and a lot about the program. And I think that's one thing we need to continue to look at is what's, what are the options out there so we can provide those opportunities for our students? Yes.
So do you have to recruit students into some of these classes and, and, or how do you get the information out to your students that you exist? Because even if a student isn't necessarily interested in energy, like in the long term, I mean, if you get fifteen college credit hours at five dollars, I mean, that would be amazing in a way with a secondary, right? You can't find that anywhere.
I have to credit our counselors for that, and we did have a parent meeting as well and, and we called, actually, what we did was we went into the classrooms, I'll back up. What we did was we went into the PLCs, professional learning communities, and we talked to the academic and the technical teachers, and we said, this is an option, what do you think? Because they're all gonna be supporting these students, not just the, the CTE teachers. And they said, this looks like a good thing. And the next thing we did was we looked at, who are the potential students that could be successful on, in an online class? Who have that individual determination that could take it home and work at night, work after school, work after work? Because it's not for everybody, not every student. Some students have a perception of what an online class is, and some of those perceptions are not right. So there are deadlines, and some of our kids aren't quite meeting those deadlines. They're finding out, if, if the deadline is at midnight, it's at midnight. So they've had to learn to get their work done on time because that is, that timeliness is critical to their grade. But it was the counselors and the teachers who said, I recommend these three students or these two students or these five students. And we pulled them in, there were about fifty-five students that came to the initial meeting, and out of the fifty-five, eighteen signed up. And then we had a parent meeting, and when the parents came, that's when they said, well, what else is available? And that's when the Flint Hills, Ben Coltrane, who is the director, said, well, there are fifteen hours available this semester. And so because of that parent meeting and he was there and went through it with the parents, I think that was a critical piece too. So it's the counselors and the teachers who are telling students about this.
But this will be ongoing for the rest?
Yes, this is our second semester, and now we have three classes instead of one class, and we have almost seventy students in the three classes. Sixty-six, I think, is the correct number.
And it's still, it's still counselor-recommended, or students just can enroll?
Well, the students heard about it then from their friends, but I think the counselors still and the teachers still recommended students for it because there has to be some individual work, they have to have, they have to do some outside of school. There's just gonna be some time. And the other part to that that made it successful, which came after the FAD, and that was the business and industry mentors. Every mentor, we had nine mentors for the eighteen students. So every mentor had two students. And they would email or they would get in touch with them. They also visited every site. We had four industry site visits last year. So the bus people were great to help us with that. And sometimes we had a bus, sometimes we had vans, but that helped as well. So when they can see the people on site, when those same people come into the classroom, then all of a sudden, it's like, I recognize you. Or then they have these conversations, and now they can call them, they feel comfortable saying, I've got a question about this process, I don't understand. And then they have a, they can text or they can call back and forth or whatever, whatever happens. So that made a big difference. The, the partnerships are huge in, in technical ed, I believe, so that was a big help. We also have First Aid and CPR that our students certify under as well, and that's in our health science pathway, so.
Who teaches that?
Dave Updike. New opportunities at Garden City High School, we have a robotics course. You heard Charlie talk about the robotics competition last weekend, they'll be going again. But this is a standalone class right now, and we're looking at between robotics and the industry, the energy industry fundamentals and the power plant technology courses to create a new pathway, an energy pathway. That will have to pass the principals, the administration, and also curriculum council here. But if we continue the partnership with Flint Hills, that's the best way to do that, and I think we can make that work. Mr. Dubrinsky is the robotics teacher. We have a new, Mark, oh.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you there for one quick second. I've liked the robotics Facebook page, and one of the really cool things that I think that they've done is fill and invite people to their classroom before their robotics meeting. They'll say, okay, we're gonna start doing this at this time, but come hang out, do your homework, get help. I really appreciate the relationship building that they're doing there.
And a lot of problem-solving and critical thinking.
Yeah.
They just found out that, I'll just say a little story, I don't have time, but they went to competition, it was a kind of preliminary competition, and they had to put their robot in a two-by-two, two-foot-by-two-foot box. So when they got there, it didn't fit. One of the questions they forgot to, someone forgot to say or they didn't ask was, what are the size of those walls? Three-quarter inch walls on that two-foot-by-two. So all of a sudden, now you're short an inch and a half beautiful ways. And so they had to argue the point that they said two-foot-by-two-foot, so they should get some allowance for their robot not fitting into the box. And so they won the argument, but they have to make adjustments this week before they go back, so, right? But they're always working, always problem-solving, and it is great because he just, he wants everybody to come in and see what's happening because that gets our kids enthused, so you're right about that. They've added a marketing pathway, which is a new marketing class, and we'll be adding another course in that, in that pathway this year. AP Chemistry is new, and there's two sections, which is exciting because again, it's adding rigor. And if we look at a bio-